Good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us this morning. Let's call to order our JFCO Board of County Commissioners meeting for January 28th, 2025. I'm Jefferson County Commissioner here with Commissioners Kerr and Zenzinger. Our clerk this morning is Anna Zendejas and our host is Michaela Zamora. And Ms. Zamora will handle all requests for public comment and public testimony in the chat for those of you who are joining us virtually. There are several ways to join our hybrid meeting, all of which are listed on our website at jfco.us. You're always welcome to reach out to the board on the county's website, or you can email us at commish, C-O-M-M-I-S-H, at jfco.us. We would also like to ask everyone to please silence your phones. In fact, I'm going to for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on our agenda is public comment, and the board will take up to 15 minutes of public comment at the beginning of our meeting. And if needed, additional public comment is at the end of the meeting. Again, public comment is for items that are not listed on today's agenda. We'll begin with those who have signed up for public comment, followed by those who have not yet had an opportunity. And we'll also check to see if we have anyone joining us online who would like to address the board as well. If you are joining us virtually, we ask that you log into our meeting using a computer. Please send a note in the chat to our host with your full name, your address, and the topic. And when it's your turn, the host will give you permission to unmute yourself. The chat function is seen only by the host and no comments are retained in the record. We have for public comment, three people signed up to speak. And I'll just do a quick check in the hearing room. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board during public comment who has not had an opportunity to sign up? All right. And do we have anyone online who'd like to join us for public comment this morning?
No one online.
Okay, great. And I'll do one more check at the end of public comment as well. First, we have Tiffany Seychelle Hicks, and here to talk about a planning and zoning case. Please come forward. And I hope I've pronounced your name correctly. Thank you. And we'll have you come right to the mic. And if you would bring that mic as close to your mouth as possible so we can hear you.
Is that good? Is that okay for you guys?
Yes.
Okay, loud and clear. All right. Well, good morning. It's nice to meet all of you.
And I'm sorry if you would please share with us your address, and we'll jump right in. You have three minutes.
Tiffany Seychelle Hicks. I'm joined here with my mother Rebecca R. Hicks. We're the owners of 27901 Pine Drive in Evergreen. We're here to talk to you today about planning and zoning case number 23-128275. C as in Charlie, M as in Mary. This has been a case that has been outstanding for over 18 months. It was first filed on September 30th of 2023. This is regarding a neighbor who has no less than 14 violations, which have been verified by planning and zoning. We have been hearing for 16 months about getting into stipulation. As far as we can tell from neighbors, nothing has actually been done or completed. These violations range from the storage of very toxic weed kill chemicals under their Vegetation Management, Inc. company that is run out of their house. This includes, and it all actually really started in 1990, Jefferson County granted a license agreement for this neighbor to extend their fence into the public right of way. This is give an inch and they take a mile. This is now extended across the entire public right of way. This is a very dangerous turn in Evergreen where it's a single lane. It's a blind turn, and it is a sharp one on north facing with ice. They have now extended and built rock walls that are even 14 feet high in some areas, fences built on rock walls that actually extend into every single parameter of their neighboring properties. I am here today on behalf of about nine other concerned neighbors, on behalf of what happened because this license agreement was never enforced by the county, and that this has empowered these neighbors to now take private property. And quite frankly, I'm tired of the county telling me it's a civil issue when this is actually our taxes paying in public right of way for a license agreement, which in the fine print says can be revoked at any time for any reason that these individuals only paid a dollar for. We're here to ask for your assistance because we are getting absolutely no traction with planning and zoning. It has been 18 months with absolutely zero actions. The neighbor has continued to be emboldened. There are obscene gestures of flipping me off, going outside, berating our contractors, and driving them off our property. And we most recently learned just a few months ago, having an excavator there looking at our driveway to try to repair it because of their drainage that their fence is causing that's illegally in the right of way, is that he would not touch our case because Vegetation Management, Inc., this neighbor in question, has a large contract with the county for weed spray operations in open spaces. We are trying to verify this with your procurement. We have yet to hear from your procurement operations as well to understand the type of contract they have. At best, this is ineptitude and competence and laziness on the part of planning and zoning for not keeping us informed. And at worst, this is negligence, favoritism, and cynicism, and cronyism that is happening. And we are at our wits' ends to try to understand how we as law-abiding citizens who are trying to protect our private property, who play by the rules, can be allowed to have somebody clearly look like there's favoritism. I also have video of a three-hour meeting of a Jefferson County official there leaving with some type of gift. And so this is where we're seeking your help to say, I don't care what division, it's part of Department of Transportation or whatever it is. We need your help in solving this.
Thank you very much for being here this morning. Appreciate it. Thank you. And I'll invite up next your mom. Rebecca Hicks is also here with us this morning. And again, if you'll share with us your address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I own actually both properties, and there's the other property is the address is 27903 Pine Drive. We have been working extensively trying to get people from planning and zoning to help us. At one point in time, we thought we did. There have just been numerous excuses. There have been health issues within the department, things that we have been very, very understanding of, trying to work and understand that people have problems. Robert Taylor tried to help us with this. I know Carrie Merkel in the county attorney's office tried to help us. People are leaving the county. We can't find anybody who is addressing the big issue here. And my daughter is enduring threats that have me very, very concerned. I tried to reach out to procurement to try to get information about their contracts that probably go back into the 90s that they have had. But when you have an individual who is threatening your daughter repeatedly, and neighbors who have moved out because of his threats, he is known as the neighborhood bully, and the county seems to be allowing him to do this, it's a code of violation ethics if he is indeed, does indeed have a contract. And we're asking Mr. Kirby here to look into that for us because I haven't been able to verify it. With people not working, it has become a real problem, getting calls to be returned. It's very difficult. I've tried to put in requests to talk to the Board of Adjustments because this is where this dollar license came from. Like I said, Robert Taylor said, no, I mean, it's obvious they didn't do it. They were told they had to provide a survey. They finally did. We haven't seen it. I can't find it in the records anywhere. That will clearly show not only did he go over the public right of way, there is an easement there from Hiwan Hills that was deeded to the county. This would have been our easement out. It is the easement for one of our neighbors who's landlocked, who will never have an easement because of this license agreement that they violated the terms of, because they have built this huge, huge fortress around. They have multiple, at least five storage buildings with all the toxic waste in there. And we've had three cases of cancer right in that immediate area because he washes all the debris right there down the driveway. He has dumped on our property. They built illegal retaining walls on our property. It's unbelievable. And we can't get the county to really look at some of these things. So we need somebody with a coordinated effort that will look at this license agreement from the attorney's office. Carrie Merkel was very concerned in one of our meetings, but it has gone just radio silent. We can't hear from anybody. Jeremy Cohen tried to say it, and they've just given us one excuse after another. And we have tried to understand. But at this point in time, when it's gone on 16 months, somebody needs to look at our position also. So thank you very much for your time.
Well, we want to thank you for taking the time to be here this morning. We know that when folks come down to speak to the board directly, there is a level of frustration that has been reached, and we want you to know.
I sent an email.
Thank you. Thank you. And our apologies. We understand completely. And what we will do is we will work closely with Joe Kirby, our county manager, as well as Kim Sorrells, our county attorney, planning and zoning, and then we'll find out more from procurement about you raised several good issues that we can dig into further. And we will circle back, and we will work with Joe to do that. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Next, we have Elaine Morris, also from Evergreen. Welcome. And if you would share with us your address, and you have three minutes.
6565 Marsh Mary Lane, Evergreen. 6565 Marsh Mary Lane, Evergreen. I'm here to talk about the clear cutting that's going on in our parks, in our land. Excuse my voice. I mean, Andy, Leslie, you guys know that I've been begging you to stop it, you know? It's like, and that was just on aesthetics. I mean, the fact that we hike in those areas and that they've been destroyed. And it's just heartbreaking for us to look at. I can't even, we can't even go to some of them anymore. Three Sisters is just particularly heartbreaking. But you know, that was my argument was for aesthetics. And then more of a looked into it, and you guys, it's bad science. I know Andy says they have a scientist, and it's like, what we're finding out. And one of the things that this particular book is called Smokescreen: Debunking Wildfire Myths, and it's by Chad Hansen, who has a PhD in research ecology, and is director of the John Muir Project. And he talks about, you know, the fact that these scientists are, you know, cherry picked by the logging industry, and that there's just a, you know, cohesive joining between the two of them. Any of the money, any of the logging that's done on public lands, the money goes straight to the Forest Service. So they have no interest in doing things by the right science. And so not only is the clear cutting, you know, aesthetically horrible, but there's found out there's just so many other reasons for us to quit doing it. It causes erosion, landslides, contamination of the water supply. It compacts the ground and decreases the soil's ability to hold water. But one of the main things is it actually makes fires worse. And we're not, not only we're not helping, but we're actually making it worse because clear cutting creates the conditions that are hotter and drier. And as we know, what the main thing that we see that's creating fires that we've seen everywhere is wind. You know, they're not going to just sit there and burn up themselves. The wind comes along. Now we don't have the brakes. The fire comes through there, and it tends to burn hotter. With an intact forest canopy, it increases the exposure, I'm sorry, not a canopy, increases exposure and reduces the moisture levels. Without trees, clear cutting, the wind breaks allow the speed to increase as it brings the fire in. Not only that, you know, it spreads invasive species because now we have, you know, ground and the wheatgrass and everything comes in there. But not even the tracks from the equipment that we've all seen coming in there, they compact the soil and spread invasive species also.
Time. Thank you, Ms. Morris. We, it is our practice that we typically don't respond during public comment. However, would be happy to say a few words about some of the issues that you've raised at the end of our board meeting today during Commissioner Reports.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a very long meeting, too, if you're, if you're able to stay, but also happy to talk to. Is there anyone else? Thanks again for your comments. Anyone else in the hearing room who would like to address the board during public comment? And I'll do one more check to see if anyone's joined us online since we last asked.
No one online.
All right. Thank you so much for confirming. That will conclude our first round of public comment. We also have a second opportunity at the end of our meeting. Next, we have the approval of the minutes dated January 14th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve?
I move for the approval of the minutes dated January 14th, 2025.
Second.
Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkeper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we have eight items on the consent agenda. Commissioners, would either of you like to take an item off of the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
Great. May I have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.8?
I move for the approval of consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.8.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkeper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next is our regular agenda. We have one item on the regular agenda. Ms. Zendejas, would you please read item 7.1 into the record?
7.1 Resolution CC 25-028, Policy Part 6, Chapter 2, Section 3, Regarding the Ordinance Regulations, The Open Carry of Firearms, -First Reading, -County Manager's Office.
Great. Thank you so much. And we have our deputy county manager Kate Newman here this morning to present this item. And Ms. Newman, I understand that this is first reading for an ordinance, and that a first reading only sets the public hearing date and orders the ordinance to be published. For those in attendance today, the proposed ordinance will not be presented today, only the proposed hearing date of February 25th. And with that, Ms. Newman, please go ahead with your presentation on item 7.1.
That's correct. Kate Newman, Deputy County Manager. This is the first reading for amendments to the open carry ordinance. As you mentioned, the first reading sets the hearing date for February 25th. This, this hearing also sets the ordinance or sends the ordinance to the paper to be published in full so that the community can view it. And that will, that will be, that will happen next Thursday. It'll be sent to the paper. So as you mentioned, today's discussions and testimony should only be about setting the hearing date or publishing the ordinance. Full amendment discussion will occur on February 25th.
That's all. Great. Thanks, Ms. Newman. We appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Newman at this time?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. I do not either. Next, we'll take public comment from those of you in person or virtually on the first reading of this ordinance. And any public comments should be limited to the proposed date or the publishing of the ordinance. And if you're joining us online, please again use the chat function to let us know you wish to testify. Is there anyone online who would like to testify on this issue?
No one online.
Thank you so much. And is there anyone here in the hearing room who'd like to testify? All right. I don't see anyone in the hearing room. Thank you so much, Ms. Newman. And may I have a motion next to approve item 7.1?
I move for the approval of regular agenda item 7.1.
Second, Ms. Zendejas, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkeper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Newman. Next, we have Under Sheriff Scott Eddy, who will present the fourth quarter 2024 Law Enforcement Authority Report, and will now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Board of Directors for the Law Enforcement Authority. May I have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the LEA?
I move we adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Law Enforcement Authority Board of Directors.
Second, Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkeper?
Yes. Welcome, Under Sheriff Eddy. It's always good to see you.
Good morning.
We're glad you're here. And please go ahead with your report.
Okay. For the Law Enforcement Authority Report, one of our first items is about the flock cameras. This technology, we've just for the first full year in 2024, have been using this system. It's a system that works across Colorado that identifies license plates off of vehicles that are either stolen, stolen plates, criminal activity on that. We've even used those to help us with some welfare checks, such as some silver alerts that help us track where some people had last passed some of these cameras. We even used it in a kidnapping case. In 2024, the sheriff's office had 238 cases where the flock camera hits were utilized, and we were able to do more than two dozen arrests out of that information coming from that system. So it's been found to be a very valuable tool for us. Another thing of note with working with the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder, we were able to set up voting booths in the detention facility, and it was a very successful program. We had about 125 inmates that were able to vote during an eight-hour period in there, much higher numbers than we've had in the past. So successful program there. We did have our CLIA reaccreditation. CLIA is Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. We proudly try to work with this organization and some others to help us set the standards, to make sure we're doing our jobs properly, and to assist us that we, with protection from other lawsuits, potential lawsuits in the future. There were 462 standards that we voluntarily comply with on this, and we were able to do very well in that assessment. And we're continue with the reaccreditation, which we've done since 1994. So our post-academy, post-certified for deputies, we did have eight graduates this course in December. Then kind of a sad but honorable thing that we assisted Golden Police Department with their first line of duty death with Officer Evan Dunn, who was killed by a suspected drunk driver during a traffic assist that he was doing. His partner Bethany Gruising, she was also severely injured in that crash. So the sheriff department assisted them with the processions, the funeral planning, and covering their patrol duties for several days so that their officers could take time to grieve and be part of this. So lighter note, our, one of our officers, Chad Bingham, we just found out in the last couple of years that he is a very talented artist. One of his works now is being exhibited in Washington, DC at the National Law Enforcement Museum Officers as Artists Exhibit. The painting they did was of his now-retired Canine Paul with his last operation that he did with the SWAT team. So very proud of that. It's a very nice work that he does on that. So and we also have him who painted for our Fallen Canine Graffiti, and we post that around the sheriff's office, too. Another good thing is the Christmas Crusade. Again, our deputies, they assisted Santa this year with getting some toys to a lot of JFCO kids in need. Staffing at the sheriff's office, we did fall a little behind what our, what we'd like as far as staffing. We're right at 93% at this time. So we are working on some concentrated efforts and some different plans to try and get those numbers up, not just with our sworn, but also with our professional staff. A lot of good ideas that we're working on, and I'm hoping that we'll be successful on that in the near future to get those numbers back up a little closer where a healthy type of attrition. Regarding our detention facility, something we're proud of is that this year there is nearly a 33% decrease in the number of Narcan incidents. Narcan is used when they have the opioid overdoses. We do feel that that's because of a lot of proactive work that we're doing with really making sure we're doing great searches on people coming in, including the body scans. Then also the deputies, when they're have these inmates in the facility, they're watching for those signs of potentially some stuff that might have gotten smuggled in. So we've caught several things that way. Another thing that we did just to start this year is an amnesty box. That is in our booking area, and it is there that if they willing to drop the drugs in before they get into the facility, we will not charge them for that. And there were 71 contraband items that were put into that box this year that never made it into the facility. So it's actually a pretty good little program for us. We're happy for them. One of our notable investigations was with the West Metro Drug Task Force. They had a significant bust where they charged eight vehicles that were involved in drug trafficking organization. They were disturbing large amounts of fentanyl pills across Jefferson County in the metro area. That case resulted in the seizure of 3,369 grams of fentanyl pills, 503 grams of meth, 65 grams of cocaine, cash, and took five, or four firearms off the street from there. So very good bust on those. Our traffic unit operations, again, that motor unit really helped a lot with the processions for Officer Dunn, who had passed away, or was killed, I should say. They also helped raise money for the surviving officer Bethany Gruising with your MC1 Foundation. Because of this type of crime that happened, they also concentrated a lot on the move over law that the state has, which if you have first responders on the side of the road, construction workers, and even motors who are broke down, they're enforcing that to make sure that people are moving over or slowing down as per the law on there.
Bless you.
Focus crimes. These are the main ones that we've identified over the years that we really concentrate on because of the effect it has on the community. They're burglary, theft of motor vehicle, and motor vehicle thefts. Proud to say, 2024, we ended with the lowest numbers in motor vehicle theft and theft from the motor vehicle that we've had in the last five years. So a lot of good work from folks and a good trend we hope will keep up. In early October, because that flock camera identified that there was a stolen car in the area, and some good work by our deputies checked the courthouse out here and found through our surveillance cameras that that stolen car actually came to the courthouse. Looking at the cameras, the driver actually walked into the courthouse, actually went to his probation officer to check in about stolen vehicle charges that he had, and drove there in the stolen vehicle. So we happily put him in handcuffs, took him back in. You know, it is kind of funny that this happens. Unfortunately, it does point out how there are certain individuals that just are continually going to keep doing these things. But we'll keep looking to try and catch them. So. Another one that is an interesting case, in October of 2023, many of you probably heard about the break-in at Crown Hill Cemetery where one of the crypt and the body was stolen. Our investigators really took that personally and did a lot of work, also cooperation with some other agencies. They were able to identify a suspect. They had come up with DNA, was no match on the National Center, but through some other work, we were able to identify somebody acting suspicious at another cemetery. Were able to get DNA from him, and it was a match. They made an arrest. Now the case is over. In December this last year, our crime scene analysts and our investigators were able to return the remains of that individual back into the crypt. So very proud of that, that they helped give that victim some dignity of what they deserved on there. And hopefully this doesn't happen again. So. Lastly, on our crime statistics, the Neighbors, which is the national incident-based reporting system, which all agencies across the country report into, looking at the numbers across the, for the fourth quarter of 2024, many, many categories that were down, and overall total, again, we're the lowest that we've been in five years of running totals on this for the fourth quarter. So a lot of great work, and hopefully we can continue with those stats and get some good reports on that. So any questions you may have?
Great. Thanks so much, Under Sheriff Eddy. I have a question for you, but I'm going to go to Commissioner Zenzinger first.
Yes. I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. Wanted to make the board aware as well as the public that we are working with the state legislature, in particular Senator Colker, to get a memorial highway designation on State Highway 58 for Officer Evan Dunn. And they are working on drafting the resolution. It has been a collaborative effort between CDOT, the City of Golden, and another of, and a bunch of different entities. Right now, they are working on identifying the section of highway and probably more than likely near mile mark or zero at the intersection of Sixth Avenue. So I just wanted to make everyone aware that that is work that is in process, and looks like it will be coming forward definitely this legislative session. And CDOT has already signed off on working with the family, the Golden Police Department. And I wanted to make Jefferson County and I wanted to make Jefferson County aware as well.
Great, thanks so much.
And speaking for law enforcement, we are very appreciative of those things, so thank you.
Great. Any other quick questions on that or comments? Okay, Commissioner Kerr?
Thank you. Yeah, on the same subject, I saw that the City of Golden has committed to providing the funding necessary for that. So knowing that that's always the big hurdle to get over at the legislature, especially this year with funding issues. But the City of Golden has agreed to do that, and I know that our transportation development folks have also put out that they're happy to create the signs to be put up and everything. So truly will be collaborative in remembering somebody who gave their all during their service to the community.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Under Sheriff, I was going to ask about an issue that I often hear from my constituents about, which is street racing. And I know that this is an issue that the Sheriff's Office looks at repeatedly, that there's a metro area task force. Any updates you'd like to share with us on how that effort is unfolding?
I don't have real specifics, but it does seem to be having a pretty good effect. I've even seen in, when I was on my personal days off, I was over here in a South Jeffco at a gas station, and literally there were some cars who appeared to be the type that were the racers. And there were law enforcement sitting on the corners, very obvious to these folks. We were not hiding from that. And they stayed there for like two hours. I came back by, they're still there. And so we're just trying to find very creative ways to just keep those stuff from happening in our county and across the metro area. So continuous work on there. They're always trying to find new ways, and we try to find ways to counter that.
It really is a challenge, just in terms of being creative, and we're grateful for all that you continue to do to help address this issue and keep the community safe. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, we're so glad you're here and give our best to the sheriff. And we're again grateful for all you do in our community, and thank you so much, Under Sheriff Eddie. With that, directors, we now need to adjourn as the directors for the law enforcement authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. May I have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners?
I move we adjourn as the Board of Directors for the Law Enforcement Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Director Kerr?
Aye.
Director Zenzinger?
Aye.
Director Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is our hearing consent portion of our meeting, and we do have three items on the consent agenda. And commissioners, I just wanted to make you aware that we do have a community member who wishes to speak to item 10.2. This section of our meeting agenda focuses on items 10.1 through 10.3. So I'd like to go ahead and pull off item 10.2 so we can hear from our community member on this particular issue. I don't know that we'll need a staff presentation on it unless, let me ask you, board members, you would like to hear from staff?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. So with that, let's focus first then on items 10.1 and 10.3, pulling 10.2 off. And let me ask, is there anyone in the audience or commissioners who would like to pull either 10.1 or 10.3 off of the consent agenda? Is there anyone online who'd like to pull either of those items off?
No one online.
Okay. With that, then, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 10.1 and 10.3?
I move for the approval of hearing consent agenda items 10.1 and 10.3.
Second.
Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and those, that motion passes for items 10.1 and 10.3. And next, we have item 10.2. And I see we have our staff members here. Is there anything you'd like to say just briefly before I go to public testimony? We're comfortable moving to public testimony, and then maybe we can turn to you if there are any questions.
That sounds great.
Okay, great. Thank you both for being here. So with that, I'd like to call up Lynn Clemmons. And Lynn, you will have three minutes to share your thoughts with us, and please share your address, and thanks for being here.
Morning, Commissioners. Lynn Clemmons, live at 6202 Kilmer Loop, Unit 102, Arvada, 80403. And I'm the president of the Westwood Villa HOA. Oh, oh, right. Sorry. Yep, no, I should know the, I know the drill.
I swear to you.
Thanks. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Lynn Clemmons, 6202 Kilmer Loop, Unit 102, Arvada, 80403. And I'm the president of the Westwood Villa HOA. I'm here to speak in opposition to hearing consent agenda item resolution CC25-030, the Quick Fixes to Zoning Resolution. Almost two years ago, McIntyre Neighbors United was told that resolutions couldn't be addressed piecemeal, specifically the outdated industrial resolution and its guidelines. Last fall, the county appropriated $400,000 to a legal firm to update the land development code. Where are the results of these efforts? It appears that from the work session updates, that the new code is almost one year behind. Why would the county need a quick fix? These sections are being taken out of context from the entire document. I'm particularly interested in the minor changes to Section 2, General Provisions and Regulations Regarding Survey Requirements for Building Permits. I'm not a contractor or a building expert, but I'm sure there may be many general provisions that might need changing. This was mentioned in the community comments that you received on this. Considering there is a massive building development proposed for my backyard, I strongly object to any building permit requirement changes that the full county community cannot research and comment on. I'm very aware of the many land use resolutions, changes that have come down from the state legislature. But is it the best practices to address these as quick fixes when the full community and the board have not been able to see them in the full context of the new unified land code? I ask the commissioners to deny this quick fix approach and wait for the full unified land code to be properly reviewed by the community and the board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Clemmons, for being here. We appreciate it very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this time before we move toward a motion? Yes, please go ahead.
I do have a question. If we are unable to move forward with changes that are a result of legislation that passed and Jefferson County was out of compliance with state law, would there be any consequences for that?
I won't go into specific legal advice, but yes, there can be if we're not in compliance. Any other comments or questions? All right. With that, let's move forward with a motion to approve consent item agenda 10.2.
Second.
Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we'll move to the hearing regular portion. Thank you both for being here, too. We appreciate you very much, and thanks again, Ms. Clemmons, for your comments. We'll move to the hearing regular portion of our meeting. We have no items on that portion of the agenda. And we'll move to our second round of public comment. And we invite anyone who has not yet had an opportunity to address the board to please let us know at this time if you're here in the hearing room or joining us virtually, if you have any comments. I see no one in the hearing room for the second round of public comment. Is there anyone joining us online?
No one online.
Great, thank you so much for confirming. Next, we'll go to Commissioner Reports, and I will begin with Commissioner Zenzinger.
Great, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have a couple of items. First and foremost, I attended the CCI New Member Orientation, and it was a really great experience, and I just want to commend CCI for putting that on. It was a good opportunity to meet some of the other new commissioners around the state and to learn a little bit more in-depth about this position. Secondly, I attended, I was a guest speaker on a panel called Bridging the Gap. This was sponsored through Civic Results, and it was an opportunity to try and educate legislators about the local positions, about what it's like to be in local government, and to try and encourage collaboration between cities and counties with our state legislature. It was a fabulous opportunity to engage with our state representatives. I also had an opportunity to attend the Arvada Chamber of Commerce, which has recently rebranded, by the way. As of today, they are now known as the Greater Arvada Chamber of Commerce. But they had a really good presentation on quantum, and they highlighted the Elevate Quantum Hub in Arvada. And I just wanted to point out that that opportunity, we were the only community in the entire nation that received this $40.5 million federal grant to invest in a quantum computing hub here in Colorado. It was a very competitive grant. And it's going to begin a quantum commons business park. This was possible through the U.S. Department of Commerce Chips and Science Act of 2022. And we're really fortunate that they're going to be partnering with our institutions of higher education, including Colorado School of Mines, CU, and CSU. And this quantum hub is located in northwest Arvada, just off of Highway 72. And it's going to require a bit more investment from different entities around the state. And they have already obtained a number of commitments, including $44 million from the state for refundable tax credits, $6 million from CU to assist with the incubator. And then they expect about $1 billion in private capital that will move into that area. So it's a really fabulous project. When I stepped into this meeting, I knew absolutely nothing about quantum other than what I saw on the Marvel movies, which are all turning out not to be true. I was kind of bummed about that, but it was a really great presentation, and it's going to be a great opportunity for our county. I also attended the very first CCJC meeting, the Criminal, oh, I can't even remember, Coordinating Justice Committee. And what I wanted to bring to your attention and to the attention of the public is that they mentioned a number of free legal clinics that their calendar for their free legal clinics was just published. This is for assistance with family law. They have a family law ask an attorney program. They have a probate ask an attorney program. They have a civil matters ask an attorney program. This entire calendar is published and available on the Court Resource Center. So if you just go and Google First Judicial District, there is a dropdown menu. You select section menu, and then there is a link to free legal clinics, and you can find the full schedule there. So we talked about that during the meeting, and I wanted to bring that up. Also, I attended the Metro Area County Commissioners Meeting, and we had a very robust discussion about a number of items concerning the homelessness programs, coordinating on emergency preparedness, and then also we had a presentation from the state about their Office of New Americans, which provided a number of resources or made us aware of some resources that are available. And then I just wanted to thank a number of departments that have taken the time to orient me to their operations, getting me up to speed with what they are focusing on, including I just want to give a special shout out to Human Services, Public Affairs, and the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport for all of the time that they invested in teaching me about what they do and the scope of their work.
Excellent, thank you. Great report, Commissioner Zenzinger. And we're really going to be looking to you to provide an update to the board and help us understand this whole quantum field.
I can do it.
Well, and I also appreciate, too, your, although I was unable to attend, is it Building Together, Building Bridges Together? What was the name of the event?
Bridging the Gap.
Bridging the Gap, thank you. So I knew a bridge was in there somewhere. That was the key point. But your city count, for those of you who may not know, former Senator Zenzinger, now Commissioner, also served on the Arvada City Council. Now she's a Commissioner, also served in the legislature. So great way to really talk about all those different levels of government. Thank you so much. Commissioner Kerr?
Well, after that, what do I have?
All right, you gotta step it up over here on the right side of the bench.
Obviously, Commissioner Zenzinger took some of my notes to report on. But thank you for talking about the, the, the one in your right hand there. The Free Legal Clinics, yes, I was going to mention those as well. So thanks for mentioning that. Do want to point out, next Tuesday, February 4th, is Rosa Parks Day, and RTD is celebrating with Zero Fair for Equity Day, they're calling it, so free fairs. So everyone is invited to ride RTD next Tuesday, February 4th, for free. And remember the work that Rosa Parks, not just her day, but also all of the work that she did with many other folks to make sure that, to bring equity to our nation. Mentioning a couple of town halls, last Saturday, we had an all Jeffco Town Hall. It was great to include many of our Jeffco legislators, plus all three commissioners were there at Red Rocks Community College in their community room. And presentations on how citizens can be effective, effective advocates for themselves and their issues. Obviously, our folks here have got that down pat. But it was, we had a presentation from Val Nosler Beck. And that was last, so coming up this Saturday, February 1st, we will be having our Foothills Town Hall meeting, which is some of our legislators' representatives' Story and to Tone, Senator Cutter, and then Commissioner Dahl Kemper and I. And I believe we're all going to be there. We're having a presentation by the Bell Center on budgets and predictions on federal money and how federal money, or the lack thereof, might impact our state and county budgets for the upcoming year. And then obviously, updates from the electeds as well. This Thursday evening, Jefferson County Open Space will be having their conservation awards. And I want to make sure people know that it now is a good time to support your local grocery store workers. Our employees could very possibly be having to do a work action to make sure that they are being treated fairly. So definitely look into that with your local grocery stores. Also wanted to, I'll say, I wanted to thank some of our community members who have highlighted the fact that Jefferson County has a diversity, equity, and inclusion department. And I say those words, I don't use the initials that they do, because I think the words are important. Diversity, equity, inclusion. Also, sometimes we throw justice at the beginning of that. Rearrange the letters a little bit to come up with Jedi, justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Because we all believe very strongly in being inclusive here in Jefferson County. We believe diversity makes us stronger. We believe in equity. And again, I thank our community members for bringing this up, focusing that, yes, Jefferson County spends resources making sure that Jefferson County spends resources making sure that we are celebrating our diversity, equity, inclusion, and provide justice in our community. And if you have any questions about resources that are spent, we will continue spending resources to make sure that our community members here in Jefferson County are protected and enjoy diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much, Commissioner Kerr. Couple of items to share with you this morning. I attended the Colorado Fire Commission meeting in Pueblo, Colorado. We meet quarterly. I'm one of two county Commissioners appointed to the Colorado Fire Commission by Governor Polis. And one of the issues that we always emphasize related to wildfire resiliency, especially in a county and other counties that are high-risk areas across our state, and I believe Colorado ranks number two or three, it's in the top three if I'm not mistaken, in terms of high wildfire risk, and certainly our community members from Evergreen and from our other Foothills communities know this. It's, there's no one silver bullet to reducing wildfire risk. And at the state level, the local level, the county level, we believe it's critical that we look at multiple strategies. So we're looking at issues related to home hardening. How do we make our homes in high-risk areas fire ignition proof? And some years ago, thanks to the work of the Jeffco Wildfire Task Force, we had a series of recommendations, which included home hardening, from fire ignition resistance materials, to looking at increased defensible space around homes, which is so critical in terms of getting rid of that vegetation that can fuel fires, and to better protect homes in high-risk areas. The Colorado Fire Commission focused on a number of issues, including the upcoming legislative session, and we've worked repeatedly with Colorado Insurance Commissioner Michael Conway, who has been a leader on the issue of how we address homeowners' insurance, which is either out of grasp, out of reach, or simply unaffordable. The rates have increased so much. And that's why, as we look at multiple strategies, from home hardening, to mitigation, to also looking at building codes, and looking at areas like a strategy to put fire back on the land as we think about prescribed burns. And we have used that strategy in Jefferson County and other high-risk areas in a way that really focuses on community safety, strong community communications, making sure that the conditions are right, with some success. And again, that is just one more tool in our toolbox to address these issues. In addition to serving on the Colorado Fire Commission, I also chair the Jeffco Wildfire Commission. And our next meeting is next month. The Jeffco Wildfire Commission will be setting priorities for the next three years, working with our Sheriff's Office. Brian Keating is our Fire Management Officer, who led the update of our county wildfire preparedness plan, also a direct recommendation coming out of the wildfire task force. We have the sheriff, we've got fire chiefs, we have water experts. We also have our county leaders, our planning and zoning team, Open Space, our county attorney's office, and many others involved in that collective effort, because we felt it was critical to bring multiple voices, including community members who serve on the Jeffco Wildfire Commission, to the table to identify how we better collaborate and partner, and how do we work together with this team and others to identify what our priorities are moving forward. And if you haven't had a chance, I get excited about these kinds of documents. I would highly recommend taking a look at our county wildfire preparedness plan. It is an incredible roadmap that was overseen by Brian Keating, who I mentioned just a moment ago, and an amazing team. And thanks to our planning and zoning department that's done a lot of work around building codes. Speaking of, and so many others, and Open Space has been phenomenal too. And Open Space has also, I want to come back to Ms. Morse's comments, has worked with community members, hearing the concerns that you have raised. And our top priority is keeping our community safe. So often, when you see the mitigation work done in our open space areas, you'll find that it is on the perimeter, it's near homes, there is work that was done near an assisted living center, as well as a local school. So they're very strategic and targeted in the way that they do their work. They do base it on science. I understand that we may have different perspectives on that, but they do very much base it on science. And we've also worked hard through Open Space to respond to some of the concerns that we've heard. Some members have said, my trail experience is different. There are fewer trees. And so they're working to ensure that there are more trees around the trail, for example. When all is said and done, we need to continue to work with our community, hear your concerns. There's some other strategies they've implemented as well. They are always welcome to have groups come, and we've been on at least two tours, if not more, with community groups who've raised concerns, and Open Space is being responsive. When all is said and done though, our top priority is community safety, balancing that with what our community likes to see in terms of its experience in our beautiful parks and on our beautiful trails. One other, two other really quick things I wanted to share with you. I also provided a comment to the wildfire resiliency code board. This is a code board that we worked very hard on during the legislative session with Senator Cutter. Recommendations came out of the Colorado Fire Commission a couple of years ago. Now the code board has come together to put on the table a draft report of codes to make those codes more consistent, instead of having a patchwork of home hardening codes for wildfire resiliency across the state. So we got our first look at the draft. I really want to thank Val Montoya and the planning and zoning team, and the building codes team, for providing feedback to the board on the initial draft. And I was able to share that information with the wildfire resiliency code board. We want to thank them for their tremendous work. It's a heavy, heavy lift. Also wanted to share that Commissioner Zenzinger and I thank you for the reminder. Commissioner Zenzinger attended the Jeffco Housing Advocacy Committee. This is an incredible group. It includes the Foothills Housing Authority. Lori Rosendahl heads it up. It's funded by Colorado Gifts Foundation. They're developers, elected officials. I see Jansen Tidmore in the audience with Jeffco Economic Development Corporation, who is also a member of that committee. And we wanted to flag for you, and thank you, Commissioner Zenzinger, for bringing this today. The Bell Policy Center has been one of our partners at the table to look at housing resources. And if any of you joining us this morning are particularly interested, you can go to the Bell Policy Center, learn more about Proposition 123, which came out of the state legislature to help us advance our work for housing that's more historical. You can learn more about the historic housing barriers, land use, and much more. So know that we're very attentive to these issues, and we'll continue to work as a board on increasing affordability when it comes to housing. And also, finally had a great opportunity to visit with the West Colfax Community Association. I think that was last week. Weeks are starting to run together. And had an opportunity to share with them the $360,000 grant that we had received to help with White Swan, which has been, as our Human Services Department put it, one of the most effective programs, if not the most effective program. We have to address on a holistic, comprehensive scale homelessness and providing families that are vulnerable with the support that they need, not only through human services, but partners like our library, our public school system, and other community partners as well. We had a lot to share with you this morning. Thanks so much for listening, but we really believe deeply in these issues. Let me turn next to our county manager, Joe Kirby.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Kerr, in particular, already shared the items that I was going to share, so I won't repeat them, but thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And County Attorney Kim Sorrels?
No update, but want to wish Commissioner Dahl Kemper a belated weekend birthday. So happy birthday to you.
We're celebrating all month, thank you. That's very kind of you, thank you. Right, there's no escape. Wonderful. Well, we again want to thank members of our community who spoke to us during public comment this morning. Thank you very much for being here and sharing your concerns. And we now will adjourn our public hearing. We'll move upstairs to the fifth floor for our briefing, and we are adjourned. We'll re-adjourn on the fifth floor in 15 minutes. Thanks.